All right, I'm gonna call the meeting in order of the DeKalb City Council, our regular meeting of November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. City Clerk, roll call.
Uh, Barnes.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith. Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic. Favor.
Here.
Clark Cohen, here.
All right, and then that leads us to Agenda Item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. I was wondering, Julie, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today?
Perfect.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You crushed it, Julie. Thank you. All right, then moving to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
All right, the agenda passes. So moving to Public Participation, Agenda Item D. Uh, the first one I have is, uh, from Sasha Cohen. He'll be coming up and speaking as an individual. And just to remind everyone that speaks in public comment, there's three minutes, uh, in order to speak, so I'd appreciate if you could keep it to three minutes maximum. Thank you.
I am here because I think that it's time we make some adjustments to the way city government is managed. You know, as, as public servants, each of us is elected by the people of this city to a term of office, and at moment, if the citizens don't feel that we are performing our jobs, uh, they have no recourse. There is no way to remove a currently sitting elected official, and I believe that that's wrong. If the citizens don't feel represented by the mayor, or an alderman, or myself, they should have a methodology to request a recall action. This is entirely possible in the state of Illinois. A city need only pass an ordinance creating such a methodology. Buffalo Grove did so a number of years ago. And, you know, I've, I've noticed through review of some documents subject to the Freedom of Information Act, that Mayor Barnes has told, uh, citizens repeatedly that they should, uh, they should push for a recall regarding my own office. And I welcome that. You know, if, if citizens don't feel that I'm adequately representing them, they should be able to start a recall petition, as they should for each and every person sitting up on these, on these chairs. I think it's entirely unreasonable that we don't have such a method in place. And I'm also a little curious as to why Mayor Barnes would have told citizens to start a campaign to do something that he should know they're not capable of doing without his action first in promoting such an ordinance. So I hope that regardless of our disagreements on any other issues, we all believe that that important level of accountability should exist, and that hopefully we can work together to direct city staff to craft a recall ordinance, pass it as a council, and let the public make their voices heard. Thank you.
All right, and then we have Ryan.
You know, I've, I've been through this once before. I was here November eighth. Northern Star, Shaw Media, they chose to scrub that, what it is that I brought to the attention of the council. And that's not just a concern for me. It should be a concern for the Hispanic community, for the community at large, that you have the power to influence the papers, the local papers, to scrub what it is that I've been reporting, what you've had knowledge of before, uh, this council had, before you became mayor, the city manager, what he's done to me and my family. The, uh, last, at the end of the last meeting, I tried to give, uh, uh, what I provided the city council to the chief of police, and he just turned his back on me. This is a situation where I'm asking for an investigation into wrongdoing to the county. The city manager is, uh, he had filed a complaint against me in retaliation. And that complaint is, uh, referring to an investigation that the county did that showed that what I was reporting about my mother being defrauded, about, uh, uh, being defrauded and being denied police reports, and the retaliation that we received on December, uh, twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, was false. I had no knowledge of this investigation. I wasn't a participant in this investigation. And how would the city manager have access to such an investigation and its result? I've been talking about corruption by Rick Amato. I've been talking about how my family has been retaliated against. This has affected my two disabled brothers, and I still haven't received an official response from city attorneys. They're not your personal attorneys. They're not, uh, we're not hiring them. We're not paying them to take, uh, the, the, uh, take up the fight to protect an individual such as city manager Bill Nicholas. Now, Lisa Freeman, the president of NIU, has this information. And they, they still chose to partner with Bill Nicholas. This is a situation where they're not denouncing any of this. The Chamber of Commerce, we need to look into what it is, if they're receiving any money from the, the city, because this city council has protection from Chamber of Commerce. Now, you may say that they have no involvement in this, but they're involved in the community. And when I brought this to their attention, because Bill Nicholas is on their board, they chose to, uh, uh, treat me belligerently, hang up on me. Nobody's officially, including the, the city, the chief of police, the city attorneys, the, the city council, the mayor. I, I've already, all you have to do is look at the November eighth city council meeting, that I shouldn't have had to been in. You guys know that there's a, a method to redress these complaints. You've had never treated them seriously. And what, you're pointing to your, your, your watch. This is not a typical situation. I should have.
No, you have three minutes and that's it, and we're at three minutes and ten seconds. So I appreciate you coming up.
And I want an investigation. This is, this is wrongdoing.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you. All right, moving to Agenda Item E, Presentations. So, we have a presentation tonight to the Trash Squirrels. Everyone here, well, I assume almost everyone here in our community, uh, knows who these people are. Um, if you haven't, I would recommend social media to you, uh, because they have absolutely crushed it from a social media perspective. But the Trash Squirrels, and Julie, how, how much, actually Julie, can you come to the microphone real quick? How many pounds of trash have you guys picked up?
Six thousand and twenty-two.
So six thousand, three tons. So I've personally been out there with them and seen, doesn't matter if the heat of the summer, doesn't matter what the weather conditions are, uh, seeing them for hours, go around our entire community and do everything they could to help beautify it. And, uh, I've been just awe-inspired by it. Um, the example that you all are setting is just fantastic, because I truly do believe that people out there see you on the side of the road, see you picking up trash, and I think that's infectious. I, I think the ripples of what you all have been doing are going to cascade into many of our other residents. And ultimately, that's what's gonna really help us with the situation that we have with litter. And then also you think of from the environment. We talk about all that litter goes into the storm sewer drains, goes into the Kishawaki River, goes into the Mississippi River, and goes into our oceans. And in our own small way, here in DeKalb, we have a group of individuals called the Trash Squirrels that are doing everything that they can in order to make a significant, a six-ton-plus difference, or three-ton-plus difference, I know I'm getting my math right, three-ton-plus difference on, uh, the situation that we have on a global level, but then also just the way it impacts locally. So, I gotta say, I, I can't thank you from enough from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure I speak for council, on just, we wanted to say thank you to you all. And I don't know if you wanna say a few words, Julie. You're more than welcome to.
Hello. So, um, I wanna say we're done for the year. It's a little cold right now to be picking up trash. Uh, we had twenty-four events this year, and we picked up over three tons. We will be starting up again in the spring, and our goal is to partner with local organizations like Kiwanis and a sorority. Um, I was driving home from church yesterday, and I saw some people out cleaning up trash by the mire, and I drove back down. I'm like, who are you? What are you doing? Are you trying to start a, a sycamore group? Because we're also trying to encourage other cities to make their own groups. But it turned out to be a sorority, and they have, um, Adopt a Highway there.
Oh, great.
They were working on the Adopt a Highway thing. So, maybe think of something else to bring to the commission to pursue the Adopt a Highway program, and maybe we can adopt roads. There's about six hundred and forty members in my group, and, um, we're not doing pickups right now, but I'm just encouraging everyone to pick up trash where they are, adopt a local piece of land, and keep it clean. You know, when you're out walking your dog, bring a bag with you. We're all out there. We all see it sitting there. I know when I'm walking with my husband, he's always like, okay, come on now, not, not now, not now. We just came back from Montreal, and there's trash everywhere. I really had to just hold my hands down, and not try to pick up all the trash in Montreal. But anyway, so, um, you'll see more of us next year, and hopefully I can make a difference on the commission.
Well, we look forward to the recommendations you make for the commission, and I'm sure, especially along these lines, you're gonna get the full support of council in the city to help you all out. So with that, I would love to take advantage of a photo op, if you wouldn't mind if I came down and got a picture with all you Trash Squirrels. And, uh, you guys wanna join us?
We can put on our shirts that they just gave us.
Oh! Well, let's get a good picture with you guys.
Put on your shirt.
I know it's unusual, but that's all right. Hello! Can you get us all?
She made the original Trash Squirrels t-shirt, and she made this mask. These are custom-made by her.
All right, I'm here. Three, two, one. I'm here.
Thanks, all. All right. And, and like I told you, Trash Squirrels, y- you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Um, most of it's pretty boring, so, um, you've got lives, you got garbage to go pick up, so, uh, feel free.
And if anyone else wants t-shirts, you can drop by the Fun and Store. He's our community partner. He adopted us all for the winter. Like, he came and found me. He gave the tent, the wagons, and collars, and everything. So, we are well equipped with your support, and he sells our t-shirts.
So the Fun and Store is downtown DeKalb, uh, right in the center of, between Second and Third Street, on the north side of the street. Wonderful shop, uh, great downtown business, and a huge supporter of the Trash Squirrels. All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. So this is exciting. We got a bunch of appointments here. Uh, we have our five, uh, police, citizens' police review board members that we'll be appointing tonight, and then also Dakota Burke, she's with the DeKalb County Health Department, um, to the Citizens Environmental Commission. But I believe I have to read each one of these. So, number one, initial appointment of Justin Carlson to the Citizens' Police Review Board for a one-year term from January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Second appointment, initial appointment of Maurice McDavid to the Citizens' Police Review Board for a one-year term from January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Appointment number three, initial appointment of Kate Noriko to the Citizens' Police Review Board for a two-year term from January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah. Number four, initial appointment of Veronica, I, I'm gonna get it wrong, I know, but Oragel, um, to the Citizens' Police Review Board for a two-year term from January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And then number five, initial appointment of John Walker to the Citizens' Police Review Board for a two-year term from January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And lastly, appointment of Dakota Burke of the DeKalb County Health Department as an ex-officio member of the Citizens Environmental Commission. And I think we have one member here, Mr. Justin Carlson. Uh, if you wanna come up, I'd love to get a photo op with you.
Mayor.
Yes.
We need a motion from the council on a second.
Oh, for appointments, yeah? Okay. So a motion to approve the appointments that I just read?
So moved.
Yes.
I have a question. You read a two-year term in January, two thousand and twenty-two and January, two thousand and twenty-three. That's only one year.
That would be two years, sir.
To December.
December.
To December.
So, uh, I, I have a motion by Alderwoman Morris, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Favor. Uh, roll call, City Clerk.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
Awesome. All right, moving to Approval of the Minutes, Agenda Item G. Uh, Agenda Item Number One, Minutes Submitted by the City Clerk. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor? So hearing none, I'll move on to Agenda Item Two, Minutes Submitted by the Executive Assistant. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
And just for the record, I was reading in the minutes of the regular city council meeting agenda, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, the minutes of the regular council meeting of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. All right, moving on to Agenda Item H, the Consent Agenda. Item Number One, Accounts Payable and Payroll Through November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of four million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Agenda Item Two, Investment and Bank Balance Summary Through September, two thousand and twenty-one. Number Three, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures Through September, two thousand and twenty-one. And Four, Freedom of Information Act Foyer Report, October, two thousand and twenty-one. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call, City Clerk.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
All right, so moving on to Agenda Item I, Number One. Give me one sec here. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open, it's a public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing at six seventeen PM. And this public hearing, um, give me a sec, I'm sorry, is, uh, on the, hey, what, what is the actual public hearing verbiage I'm supposed to read here?
It's on, it's on the aggregate city levy, which includes the DeKalb, the proposed DeKalb library levy and the city levy.
So that's the official verbiage that I just need to read for the record?
Yes, you can say that.
All right, so it's the aggregate city levy, which includes the DeKalb Public Library as well. Um, I'd ask if there's anyone in attendance that wants to speak to the public hearing? I think I have someone, Mark Scott?
I would like to speak.
If you could, sure. Mark Scott comes first. So Mark, if you could approach the podium and just speak in the microphone, that way everyone at home, and the video that we record will have your comments.
Okay. First of all, I got two things. I'm gonna do the short one first. It's not the library. It's about the sixty to seventy-dollar tax rebate, or whatever tax you wanna give off on the, uh, income tax, or not income tax, but our real estate tax next year. I have four family and friends that left the city of DeKalb, moved to Maple Park, Cortland, and Sycamore. They did not leave the area, they left the city, because they're claiming they cannot see any advantage to the amount of taxes they're paying. Now, you drive around any neighborhood, we've got crumbling streets everywhere, and only God knows what's going on underneath. I think you should take that sixty or seventy dollars, that's not gonna make or break any of us based on the taxes we currently pay, and put it towards some type of repair. We would like to have new people come into this city. You only get one chance to make a good first impression. And when you're driving around looking for a home, and you look at the streets you're driving on, what are you looking at? You're looking at, where are my tax dollars gonna go? So I think that should be considered. Rather than give it back to us, which isn't gonna be much of anything, put it into a fund and do some repairs with it. Okay? Now the big thing. This public library has been grossly mismanaged, especially financially, for the last eight to ten years. Going back a couple of steps, I was one of the people against the expansion or the remodeling of this library. The reason being, a lot of us saw that the numbers didn't add up. But at that time, they put on this big, uh, house of cards castle that, that powers to be accepted. And what happened? The building got constructed, they got all done, ready to go. They couldn't meet their financial obligations. They go to the city. The city takes out a twenty-year loan to help pay their bill. Now, that doesn't fall on your shoulders, that falls on your predecessors. What does fall on your shoulders, probably two or three of you weren't here at the time, was three years ago, the other tax rebate that they took a loan out, or they needed a loan for, that we gave them cash, and then they came up with a song and dance and said they couldn't give it back to us. So they stole from us three times that year. One, rules say, you give out cash, you're entitled to cash back. This song and dance says, oh, we all know this, we don't know that. You take any fifth grader with a tablet, can make columns on a computer and tell you how to look at it, and what changes need to be done. Then they said they were gonna put it into a, uh, a holding or a, uh, escrow account until they decided what they were gonna do. That was over a year. That money made interest. That's our interest. We didn't get that either, did we? It was way over a year before you even got the rebate. Financial rules say, you don't pay on time, you're entitled to a penalty or interest. We didn't get any of that. So, this whole library system has been nothing but a, a shaft job from day one. Now, we are in a digital era. E, e-readers, audiobooks, you go on, online, you can get any type of information, reference that you can without even having to come to the library. Uh, experts are saying, twenty-five years from now, sixty percent of library staff, this includes librarians, will no longer be. Fifty percent, or, uh, in fifty years, a hundred percent of all, uh, brick and mortar bookstores, and sixty-nine percent of libraries will be closed. So, in the, in accordance with that, six years ago, college graduates, they asked, if you get married, are you gonna have children? Twenty-three percent said one or two. This past June, they did the same survey. That twenty-three percent went down to nineteen percent. Eighteen percent up to this year's graduates said maybe one. So we're not even gonna have a future for people to use the library. So, if you're dependent on your age, ten, twenty, thirty years of paying the library's portion of your tax bill, I'm sure you could put that money to better use than putting it on a dead horse. It's a slowly dying municipality. We just can't keep paying for that. Seniors like myself, okay, they want fourteen percent. I can't go to Social Security or my pension fund and say, I need a fourteen percent increase. They're gonna laugh me out of the building. But yet, they stiffed us twice, and now they come up and they say, we need a fourteen percent increase. Now, if you look at all this, that money can be used for a lot better things, like somebody like me, you can use it towards food, medicine, increasing bills. Why do they come up at a time when we got the biggest, uh, inflation that we've ever had, and say, we need an increase? It's just total mismanagement. What we need to do is, well, back every minute. From what I was told, you cannot alter their, what do you wanna call it, tax plan or whatever it is?
Their levy, yeah.
Levy, okay, you can't alter that. But what you can do, is you can tell all of us what we need to do to get them off our tax bill, and go back to the old way. The old way was one of two things. They lived off what the state gave them, and what the friends of the library gave them, or they became part of the city budget, and where you controlled what they had every year. But we need to get them off our tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ryan, if you're gonna speak directly to the levy, that's what this public hearing is about.
I believe I can do that.
Okay.
When it comes to our taxpayer dollars, that is given to the city for service, or services. And some of that is not being provided to us, and I know for a fact it hasn't been provided to me. I mean, how you guys treat Hispanics is one thing. But I called Sickich today, and they have done the, the reviews of the audits for the last two years, or the last fiscal two years. And I spoke to an administrator slash receptionist named Jasmine. This is the law firm, or the, sorry, the firm that you guys hired to do an audit. You guys had TIF irregularities that should have been investigated in such a way, you have such a friendship with the county, that there's no way that I believe that that forensic audit that focused only on TIF irregularities would be enough to look at mismanagement by the city manager. The betrayal of the public trust that I've received is enough for me to call into question everything that this city manager has done. How is it you guys are trusting him with millions of dollars, taxpayer dollars? And this sixty-five dollars that you're gonna give back to us, you can keep it, because I would rather receive the, the full, the, the full services, including the protections that any citizen should be receiving, such as full, uh, uh, police, when I'm asking for police reports, I don't wanna be intimidated, I don't wanna be called by Commander Leverton at home anymore to be threatened when I'm asking for a police report. This is a situation where we're, as citizens, I can have all the questions that I ask, and I'm talking to an answering machine. Or I don't receive any kind of response because you guys are hiding behind COVID. There is nobody, you can call the city right now, at any day, and you will get an answering machine, or is it just, you know, for me, where I will, I will not receive, or I will be hung up on by city, city officials, you have never responded to me. You have never answered your phone. You have never responded to me on any of these concerns. And I, and I'm pretty sure that anybody that's a, a, a citizen.
Please stay to the tax levy.
This is about the tax levy. Because if we're paying taxes, do you don't understand that that, that is applicable? That the services that we should be receiving? It's about streets. It's about the police. It, we pay the police. And one of these, uh, license plate readers that you guys were paying for was installed on, outside of my house. And this was a situation where I made complaints, because I, I usually have witnesses when I call. And they were concerned that the police, because of the, the, the situation, that they might be having those readers document who it is that's coming, uh, to my home. I brought that to the police's attention. I spoke to, uh, a, a communications, uh, uh, person, I don't have their badge number, but the, the situation was, they were demanding what witnesses I was talking about. This is the kind of treatment I'm getting from the police. And I'm pretty sure we're, our taxes are going to that, to how we're being, you're, you're actually creating a culture. You're using this money to create a culture. And that's not the culture that, that taxed out. Like I said, you can keep that sixty-five dollars if it means you actually are gonna use it for what we need you to use it for, which is the, the, the betterment of our community, the betterment of our, our safety. I don't feel safe in the city of DeKalb. There is no way that I, anybody that's reporting what I'm reporting should be treated this way by the, the, the city, the city attorneys. Okay, maybe I need to ask questions. But if I'm not gonna receive those answers, what is it we're, we're actually using these tax dollars for? dollars for? The situation with the TIF, we need forensic audits that focus on more on TIF and more on what occurred. You had given away cash. Is there any way to understand, and this is a question that I think needs to be answered. You have loans that you gave out through that last tip that you're ending, that went to Brian Bemis, other, other papas, and you have loans that are going to go to 2048 or something like that. And how is that included in this, this tax, this tax levy or whatever? This, there is no, no way to document what it is, how we're getting that money back, where is it going? There has to be, you talk about mismanagement. The concerns I have, there needs to be a forensic audit on the city manager and how he's conducted himself when it comes to the fiscal side of everything.
Appreciate it.
You're ending my time?
So how does this work? Like?
There is no time limit.
I'm not asking you, sir. I'm asking the city manager and the city attorney.
Calm down, sir. I mean, he's just a citizen.
I'm telling them.
It's long been our practice to limit public comment to three minutes. So I think it's appropriate, doesn't matter what the meeting, hearing is for, what the meeting's for, but.
All right. All right, well, I'll end. But I want to make sure that you understand that my tax dollars are paying for a city attorney that is not responding.
I'd be loud and clear.
Is not responding to, you guys send me to this city attorney, Matthew Rose, Donahue, and they haven't responded officially to what it is I'm reporting. And like I said, you can keep that $65, it's not going to help us. What we can do is use that money to get a forensic audit on all of the finances of the city of DeKalb. Because there needs to be a full accounting of what it is we receive from the airport, because this general fund, if you look at the documents that the city manager prepared, it is so vague. I mean, you're talking about a general fund, you're not breaking it down, you're not showing us where the money's coming from, what the money is. We need that. The city manager is getting paid to do that. And why isn't he providing us that?
Appreciate your comments.
I'm asking for information, we need it.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Oh, sorry, I didn't, you didn't say anything and you didn't submit a form, so how am I supposed to?
Mr. Barnes, you don't have to sign up for public hearings, just so you know. And there is no time limit. Section four, city council rules, I read it today just to be sure, as long as you maintain and you stay on subject. And that was what I planned to do regarding this.
Awesome, thank you.
And I noticed the last public hearing that you had two weeks ago, there was the ability to Q and A. In fact, council even participated in the last public hearing. So council asked questions when the gavel was open till the time the public hearing was closed. So there are different rules that apply. So, Mr. Barnes, I suggest you read the rules. Let me start by talking about the library. First off, the $65 that has been bandied about, that's for homes in Bill's neighborhood here, not in most people. Most people are going to get about $35, but yet, I will compliment the city because this is the second year in a row that the city, city of DeKalb itself will actually levy a lower tax on the average homeowner. It's a good thing with TIF one coming off, coming off the tax rolls or getting back, I should say, part of the EAV and the Farrar being put back online. Now, I am repulsed, once again, I want to report this, that the council has been blind to what the library has doing regarding fiscal matters until the very end of the year. I remind you, now if you look at the school district, they don't have to submit their levy, and I believe all taxing districts don't have to submit their final levy until the end of December. So you guys don't need to approve this tonight. You can ask library board to go back to the drawing board, they could still post a meeting notice and revise their levy. That is possible. The library's going to, the library is basically asking.
And Mr. Charbot, we did do that, and we are postponing the vote on the levy tonight.
Okay, that wasn't mentioned, so if that's news.
Just so you know that.
That's great news. Good, 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 we're making some progress here. So in the, in the backup packet for tonight's meeting, it does state, and Mr. Barnes, that you were going to have a conversation with Emily Faulkner regarding the library. What did you discover in that conversation as far as rationalizing the 14.1% levy increase?
Still an ongoing conversation.
Still, okay, so will she be coming back before council and the public to explain why they need 14.1%? Let me explain this further. As Alderman Verbic keenly pointed out, you guys all read the census, the city of DeKalb, down 9%, yet the library is asking for 14.1% more dollars. They are the only taxing body, and I checked with the township, I checked with the county, I checked with the school district. Everybody through those particular items on their tax bill are going to pay less this year, and the city of DeKalb. City of DeKalb has the highest decrease, which is good. This is the second year, and I'll stress this again, that I'm going to compliment the city on this. However, you guys are not required to rubber stamp the library. Mr. Perkins and Ms. Larson, you both said, we'll deal with this next year. Yeah, we'll deal with this next year. The time to deal with it is this year, because by next year, you guys will forget about it. You need to deal with the library right now. I do have a question for Mr. Nicholas. I know we had some email conversations on this. The multiplier from the township, what was stated in your packet for the past few meetings was 1.0199% or 1.02. The revised amount is 1.62.
1.0162.
Right, in other words, a 1.62%.
Correct. But the multiplier is 1.0162, not 1.06.
So in other words, a 1.62 increase in property value as opposed to a 1.
Can we just be clear, though? It's 1.0162.
Which is 1.62%.
Correct. You just said it was 1.06, so I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the multiplier.
No, well, that's the multiplier, right.
Yes.
Previously, it was 1.02%, or you can do it math. So in other words, the multiplier for everybody is higher than we originally thought, based on what this council saw on its agenda packets for the past few months.
It's lower.
What's that?
1.019.
No.
Is lower than, or is higher than 1.016.
No, look back at the figures, the revised figures at the city manager. Bill, you can look at the figures on there. You said 1.0, I'm sorry, it would be approximately 1.02% is what you had. Now it's 1.62.
No, it's 1.0162. That's the multiplier. It's a 1.62% increase.
Right, but there was another zero in there. He revised the figures that show the property, what we're going to get back, what each taxpayer is going to pay to the city, is now we're going to get a little bit, we're going to be paying a little bit more to the city, based on his revision. It does, it's not, it's maybe a few dollars here, but it is a revision where we are paying more. More importantly, the library is getting more from this as well. So everybody, based on the original estimates, there were some questions regarding different taxing bodies, whether it was 1.99 or 2% to 1.62, some said it was lower. But I want to stress that the library is the only taxing body that will not lower its rate. They're the only ones that are.
Which I said, we talked to them, and we're in discussions with that right now.
Okay, well, let me tell you some of the emails I got from Emily regarding this, and I kind of wish she was here to answer this question. She's claimed the rationale for grabbing as much money as they can was because of, quote, following things. A, necessary repairs to the building. What the heck is broke with a brand-new building we're in?
Well, there's a whole nother side, remember, that's 100 years old.
This building here, the ones that the taxpayers paid for. So we paid for this. Infrastructure requirements for maintaining the library. Shouldn't we have planned for this already? Isn't that what the library board is supposed to do? And the most ridiculous reason she gave me was, and I think we all use this for our own homes, she said to address any unexpected issues that may arise in the future. Who doesn't deal with that? I can't go and say, hey, mayor, can I come over to your house and grab 50 bucks? You can't do that. It sounds like a slush fund they're trying to build up. And if you guys allow them to get away with this, then you guys are complicit in this. So I'm glad to see that we're going to postpone this, I guess we're making some news here with that. Another issue with the library is regarding their costs. Remember, this building was closed for 18 months. There were services that were not provided for 18 months. I know Carolyn's happy because she can take her kids over here or whatever, is a reason for dismissing the library increase, but 18 months, when most businesses close for 18 months, what do they do? They figured out ways to save money. They found out things, like the other gentleman said, why did we have employees here that were doing nothing? Why did we not cut back? Every private business did that during the pandemic, with the exception of government organizations, because they know they could grab the cash from the taxpayers. Absolutely ridiculous. Why, there were no cuts made. Those are questions you need to ask Ms. Faulkner and have her explain to the community.
You're assuming we haven't.
Okay, those are good questions. And with that, that sums up my comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come to the podium. And again, if you could, just keep your comments to the tax levy.
Can I first ask, what date will you hold the vote for the levy?
What's the council meeting, city manager? Is it 13?
Well, it'll be on December 13th.
December 13th.
My name's Amy Ferraro, and I moved to this area three years ago. I love the city of DeKalb, I love living where I do, but I will tell you, I'm going to be part of that 9%. I'm going to move. It really, and it is 100% because of the taxes. I love my house, I love living where I do, the downtown DeKalb area, Sycamore, everything you guys have to offer. This is my dad's hometown. I'm asking you to hold the library fiscally responsible, please do not vote yes. We need to do everything possible to keep people here. I don't want to move. If you can continue to bring down the taxes, I won't. But I talked to my neighbors, and there's a lot of us that are going to leave. What are you doing to bring people here? I came from north of Rockford area, I work in Rockford, so I commute back and forth. I want to stay, I can save $5,000 on my taxes if I move back north. That's a lot of money. Why are we so high? I don't even understand it. I moved from an area that had the great schools. The school rating here is not as good as where I came from, but this school is getting a lot of money. And I'll stick to the library. It's just, we really need to see what we can do as a community to keep these taxes lower, please.
So a huge priority of ours is, and I think the city of DeKalb is showing leadership in that, reduction of the tax rate, reduction of trying to take, put money back in people's pockets, overall trying to reduce the tax rate. This is a conversation that happens constantly at the city hall, between myself, between council members, and between the city manager. So we're going to work diligently, showing leadership as a city doing this, and then also hopefully having great discussions with our other taxing bodies to ultimately be able to achieve what you want and what we all want, is a reduction in our overall tax rate. So it's overall, we can have affordable housing in the city of DeKalb, and we can all live here, have good services, but not have to overpay for those services. So top of mind, believe me. Are you coming to the podium to speak as an individual? Okay.
All right. I have a number of thoughts about both the city tax rate and the library tax rate. The first thing that comes to mind and sort of was, was brought to mind by something that my friend Mark said, was that the library hasn't been run like a business. And I don't disagree with him, the library hasn't been run like a business. But I think we need to remember that the library isn't a business. It's a public service organization that exists to provide benefits for the residents of our community. Now, that doesn't mean that they're immune from criticism when they exceed their spending. It doesn't mean that they're immune from criticism when they come back and request more from our citizens during times when people who live here are already struggling. And so I think we need to reframe how we look at the issue of the library. We need to be cognizant of the importance of fiscal responsibility, but we need to balance that with the understanding that we don't run a library to provide a profit motive for the city. We run it for the betterment of all the people that live here. Secondarily, you know, I think that the point that Ms. Ferrera, Farrar made, was, was one that sort of hit home to me. You know, I'm, I'm 24 years old, I'll be 25 this Thursday, actually, and I bought my first home here in DeKalb this year. I bought a mobile, which allows me to avoid having to pay property taxes, but that's a starter home. It's somewhere I'm going to be for the next five to 10 years before I look at where I'm going to purchase an actual, fully in-the-ground home. And when I look at the direction of taxes here, and even where they are starting, I don't necessarily see this city as the place that I would want to purchase another home, pay property taxes, and receive city services from. Do we get back in return for the incredibly high level of taxes that we pay services commensurate with that? You know, I, my parents' tax rate in Naperville, their home, is comparable. And I don't think anybody would make the argument that we receive the same level of city services that citizens of Naperville receive. It's just, it's just incredible to me that there always seems to be money to be spent on things like fancy camera systems and six-figure salaries for city managers, but there's never enough money for the city services that would really help the people here. And so I just think the entire budget and the entire tax levy needs a second look by the council to see what our priorities are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Is there, yeah, you can go to Mike, is it, I don't know if it's a free-for-all, people can keep coming up, or?
The last public hearing, you had Alderman questioning back and forth.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm looking at the.
Be consistent, Mr. Barnes.
Trying to be consistent.
If you give directions at the beginning, to say if people are going to repeat what others have said, you'd appreciate it.
Okay. So if it could be final comments, I would really appreciate it.
Forensic audit, are we going to receive one? I mean, you can keep that $65 if that goes to a forensic audit, to everything.
You brought this up, you brought this up during the last public comment.
No, I know, and I'm asking the question, how do we go about making the city council make that happen? We need a forensic audit, not just focused on, on certain aspects of TIF. I mean, on everything the city manager has done, conducted.
You bringing it before us gives us food for thought to decide if that's the direction we want to go.
It's not just food for thought. How do we start a process where the city council?
You're looking at it right here.
All right, well, you guys.
You're doing it right now, so.
Well, you have.
That doesn't mean it's going to start, but you're doing it right now.
Well, I can guarantee it's not going to start, because the way you've been treating me on other matters, this is not something that my taxes are actually going anywhere if you guys are in charge. So this is a situation where I'm asking for the forensic audit, and I want to make that happen, so.
Actually, I did have one question. The, the library board is somewhat independent, but serves at the appointment of the mayor.
That is correct.
Do you have, are there going to be terms expiring this December 31st? And do you have a concrete plan to replace the expiring members of the library board with members who are more committed to your version of fiscal responsibility?
I do not have a concrete plan. Too early.
Quick note, we brought up property tax rates, and I would just like to make sure the language is clear to the viewing public, that property tax rate reduction does not necessarily mean a reduction in the dollars you pay to each taxing entity. So if you really want to make a point about what the city is doing, focus on the dollars, the fewer dollars that the citizens will pay.
And I actually appreciate that.
Emily Faulkner bragged in her email, we're keeping the rate the same, yay! That means you're raising my taxes by 1.62% because of the EAV. So honesty, please, be more transparent and tell folks. It is confusing. Numbers are confusing, but numbers matter. And this year, boy, with the natural gas bills we're all going to be paying this year, electric bills, but especially natural gas, when people are lopsided with those throughout the winter, and then they get their property tax bill in April and see a wallop on there, that's a one-two punch. You have people in this community who cannot afford this, and property taxes, that's a big bite.
And I thought it was clear, but to be clear, the city of DeKalb is putting money back in the wallets of taxpayers. That's an important distinction, for sure. Any other comments?
All right, hearing none, moving on to, bear with me. City manager, anything to add?
This is a public hearing, there are two items on the agenda later on, which we will.
Cover them, okay. City council, anything for discussion during the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then at 6:49 PM. All right.
Moving on to Agenda Item J, considerations. Consideration of the exemplary career of retiring fire chief Jeff McMasters. Absolutely. Is Jeff here? There you are. City manager?
Jeff, come on in. He had a nice ceremony at the... Did everybody hear the opening? At the...
Grab a microphone. Give me a minute.
We had a nice ceremony at the fire hall on Friday, which noted Jeff's pending retirement. He's still our fire chief until the 27th. And it was well-attended. A lot of former chiefs and a lot of retirees, but a lot of public employees and people in the various neighborhoods that we serve and protect showed up and filled the fire hall, the apparatus floor. And I know Jeff was very appreciative. His family was appreciative. One thing struck me while we were there. The plaque that the department gives retiring people usually has a badge, unlike what the chief has, of every rank that that person had served in. And there was scarcely any room on this, oh, I don't know, two-by-two, two-by-three, whatever, sized plaque for all the badges and all the ranks and all the service that he has done in his 26 years. I just want to say, there really aren't enough words to say how grateful we are for your dedication. This is a person who always showed up as chief, and we'll just start with his most recent role for the last couple of years. He was one of the two chief officers who would roll for every major fire call and so forth. And he was often on the fire scene, providing incident command until others could arrive. So Jeff, 26 years is a long time. As I said on Friday, in the fire service, days run into nights, and nights into days, and days into weeks, and weeks into years. And pretty soon, 26 years pass. And I just hope that your retirement years are half as rewarding as your years with the city of DeKalb. Thank you very much. And in the, maybe, maybe you... Okay. But first, I just want to say, in behalf of the mayor and the city council, the city of DeKalb extends our appreciation, as I've said, to you for your 26 years of dedicated service, which began on November 27, 1995. I wish you were city manager. And ends this year on November 27. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item K, resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2021-100, appropriating the sum of $1,825,000 of motor fuel tax funds for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, Section 22-00000-00-GM, from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, in order to receive our share of motor fuel tax that is available, because when we go to the pump, we pay a certain amount per gallon pump, the Illinois Department of Transportation requires that we enter a resolution such as this and an agreement. We expect in 2022 to receive about $1,825,000. This money can be used for road salt, engineering services, electricity for streetlights and traffic signals, and street resurfacing. And we have ever intend, as you see in your background on Page 6, to use it for those purposes. We recommend your approval.
City council? Hearing none, roll call, city clerk?
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. Moving to Agenda Number Two, Resolution 2021-101, authorizing a supplemental professional services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc., for engineering design of Lincoln Highway lane reconfiguration in an additional amount not to exceed $32,066. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Faver. City manager?
Yes, just briefly, the background explains that, as you know, we've been working for over a couple of years looking at the reconfiguration of that stretch of Lincoln Highway that goes from First Street to Fourth Street to the Union Pacific tracks. Naturally, we've been working closely with the Illinois Department of Transportation. The state owns that right-of-way. It contracts with us and other types of agreements to help with the maintenance. But more importantly, from time to time, it makes some sense to make adjustments from an engineering standpoint. In our case, it's a little more elaborate than that. We're not just talking about a few radia. What we're trying to do is reduce the, what's been pretty much a truck raceway from four lanes to three with a center turn lane. This will widen the sidewalks on both sides, affording local businesses the opportunity for more outdoor events and use of the outside adjacent to their storefronts. We've talked about this. There seems to be a very strong and wide support for this. We've hit a few snags along the way in terms of plan development. There are different layers of the Department of Transportation. We work with Division 2. And then ultimately, the secretary and staff in Springfield get the chance to approve such plans. We have included a bike way, which is on a parallel path that's going to go over Grove Street. We ran into one other thing, which had not been raised in several years that we've been working on this. And that was the possibility that as we approach very close to the tracks where we will end, as they cross Lincoln Highway, we'll end the reconfiguration, that we might need to make some improvements, change the long mast arm and maybe one of the cross box and so forth. That would not only add considerable expense, but it would also probably delay the project for another 12 to 18 months. There is an alternative workaround, happily. The right-of-way for the Union Pacific tracks ends about, not quite at mid-block, between third and fourth. It's possible to taper the end of that narrowing at that point to meet the state's requirements. In order to do this, somebody's got to draw those plans. It's going to change the scope of the engineering issue that we've been under contract with Engineering Enterprises for. And so that's what this item is about. The, when you throw it all in and then having possibly to do some more iterations of plans with, between now and maybe February, the total comes to about $32,000 and change. So we recommend that we enter a supplemental services contract with Engineering Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $32,066.
City council? Questions? Hearing none. Roll call, city clerk?
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes.
Mayor, may I want to just tip the hat to Zach Gill, our city engineer, for a lot of...
Yeah, good point.
Very earnest and continual work to try to make this succeed. And thank him again for looking at an alternative to what might have been an extension that we weren't looking for.
In the short time that I've been in this role, I can't tell you how many city staff have just been so accommodating, so easy to work with. And you're right, Zach Gill is definitely a gem, for sure. All right. Moving on to Resolution Number Three, Resolution 2021-102, authorizing the waiver of a competitive bidding and award of a contract to Stryker-powered system and stair chairs in an amount not to exceed $350,000. I will take a motion to bring it to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Chief McMaster and Deputy Chief Thomas and Local 1236 for working with me on this and working with the department to try to replace some pretty pricey, but pretty necessary new cots and stair chairs and power lifts that will not only protect the backs of firefighters as they're lifting gurneys down narrow stairs and in the dark, and then hoisting them up sometimes with anywhere from a 200 to a 400-pound load, sometimes with one person, sometimes with two. And for the benefit of the patients, as well as our employees, this is the way to go. The fire department did look around, and Stryker Power is a particular vendor in this case. They are renowned for providing a good price for a very good product and a necessary product. In this case, all of our cots on the front-line ambulances are out of... The parts, replacement parts are out of stock. They've reached that age where we just cannot repair them as we like. And again, they're an old model and an old way of providing patient care and patient service. And we'd like to clean that up. This price does not have to be paid in 2021. We will not receive the cots, if the council approves this, until 2022. However, there will be, we're told, a sizable pricing increase as of January 1. So we wanted to get your approval so we can nail down the current price and avoid that increase. And so this is on your agenda. And we ask that you waive competitive bidding and award the contract to Stryker-powered system.
City council? Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. All right, moving on to ordinance's second reading. Ordinance Number One, so Ordinance 2021-044, authorizing the 2021 levy and 2022 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes in special service areas of the city of DeKalb for fiscal year 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to recommend that we postpone the second reading on Ordinance 2021-044. And I'll also recommend the same on the next, 2021-045. And here's why. So this agenda was published last Thursday, late afternoon. It was in the late afternoon that we, the mayor, at the mayor's request, I joined him and representatives of the library to discuss what's been referenced in the hearing here tonight, namely, the proposed library levy. And it was, I would say, a constructive and lively conversation. I think that's a diplomatic phrase. And we are feeling pretty confident that there will be some change. We can't speak for the library board. I believe the library board will meet between now and when the council convenes again. And we hope it will be done in such a way that when we come before you on the 13th of December, there'll be an agenda that will show a different aggregate levy. We have to slightly revise, obviously, this ordinance and the next ordinance. But at this time, I think the prudent thing is to postpone a vote.
Council? Alderman Faver?
I'd make a motion to table this resolution and, or this ordinance until December 13th, the next meeting of the city council.
Seconded.
So we have a motion by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call. Or discussion, I'm sorry. Discussion first, anything? Hearing none, roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
My understanding, that motion and second and roll call supersedes the original motion to bring it to the floor.
Correct.
Ordinance, the 2021-045, same thing, Bill? Bring it to the... Okay. So ordinance Number Two for second reading is Ordinance 2021-045, abating the 2021 tax levy for the debt service of the general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Then, per what city manager said earlier, I would take a motion to table this to the December 13th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Faver. City clerk, roll call.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
All right, it has been tabled.
I want to, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to be really clear.
Please.
The initiative of the mayor's, the mayor made the point that was made here repeatedly tonight that it's very important that all of the local taxing bodies, including the city, take into consideration what people are paying in the way of taxes on an annual basis, real out-of-pocket dollars. But also, as we look at our rate and as we look at, for instance, there are a lot of reasons, in addition to the local taxpayers, that we should be concerned. Also, the future taxpayers, whether businesses or individuals coming in, do compare. And it's important that we know that we don't rank very well in terms of what communities in King County are charging in, by way of an aggregate, excuse me, I'm tired of speaking through this. Aggregate rate, and it's the same here in our county. So we've got some work to do. And it's not something we can do alone. We make up a tenth of the overall aggregate rate. And it amounts to about that much in terms of actual out-of-pocket taxes. So it's important that we get cooperation in this. And we get, we're over $11 per 100 EAV. We've got to be down to 10 or even lower than that. Thank you.
And with the increased EAV that we're going to see in the foreseeable future with Facebook, with Project Barb, we know that there's more increased EAV coming in the future. So this really is a golden opportunity for taxing bodies throughout our community to be able to show the leadership like we've been doing, and like I know many of them are going to do in order to continue to drive down the overall tax rate that we have in the city of DeKalb. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item M, ordinances, first reading. We have Number One, Ordinance 2021-047, approving the plat of vacation for Northland Plaza Resubdivision Number Three. That's B33 Northland Plaza LLC. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that was moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Larson, Alderwoman Larson. All right, that was moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Larson, Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good opportunity for us to do some cleanup. It's not unusual for development areas that maybe were originally platted for a variety of purposes, going back maybe several generations, to find that there are some easements that were projected at the time of the first platting that never held any utilities, never had any pipe in them, never carried any water in them. And we find that to be the case in an area that is in Northland Plaza. There is a resubdivision number three that is also featuring a, the newest vendor, TJ Maxx, which had relocated but stayed in the City of DeKalb, which we're happy to say. And it's been discovered in the course of that, of a variety of transactions, that there's a seven-foot by 106-foot portion of an easement that partially goes under the building. Not a good thing if you're working with local, or any bankers. They don't want to know that maybe it's some part of the building might have to be torn down by some utility that decides to claim their their right of access. So in this case, there isn't, to our knowledge, such a utility. As you can see in the background, there are a lot of utilities that have been contacted who've said we have no problem with this, including, of course, the city and the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, Comcast, Metronet, Frontier, AT&amp;T. We're still waiting on confirmation from NICOR and ComEd. And it's important, though, that as we get near the year end, that all the parties know which way you're headed and would like to head, anyway. And so this was brought to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission had no trouble recommending to you that there be a vacation of that seven-foot by 106-foot portion, obviously subject to the final approval, the final concurrences of NICOR and ComEd. So we recommend that you support the Plan Commission's request.
City Council? Pretty cut and dry. Okay. Roll call, City Clerk.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yep.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
So ordinance passes on first reading. Would you like us to have a motion to waive on second reading?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to waive ordinance two zero two one dash zero four seven on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Alderman McAdams and Alderwoman, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Roll call.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
So ordinance two zero two one dash zero four seven just passed on second reading. So moving to number two, ordinance two zero two one dash zero four eight, approving a special use permit for a self-storage facility with interior unit access to be located at 1700 Sycamore Road, DeKalb-Harlem LLC. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 15th of November, the, excuse me, the commission also considered this request. Petitioner First Midwest Group has been in control of the DeKalb Shopping Center for some time. This was once the, known as the Eagle Shopping Center, those of you with a long institutional memory, business, local business memory. The space in question is about 20,000 square feet where the Eagle was once centered, but it hasn't been leased since 2015. So it's been seven years. The setback of the line of stores that were once part of that shopping center is very significant, unlike the, what often happens today in the design of a commercial or power strip where they're closer to the main artery that some people can see. It's also in the shadow of the more dynamic Market Square Shopping Center, no question about that. So it just hasn't been leasable, and the depth of the space is so significant that it would take a really unique, large user to get in there. And we haven't found one, and the owner has not found one either. So the owners had success with a type of use that we have been hearing more about in our area, independent of their own interest in providing one, and that is interior climate-controlled, secure, self-service storage facility. And this has been done in other areas successfully, and oftentimes brings some life because of the renewed, not a lot of traffic, but regular people, regular traffic coming in and leaving. And the, this proposed facility would offer a range of different-sized units. The parking that's there is, it's a sea of parking, actually. It's a, there are some 332 parking spaces there. Any given day, there might be 25 or 30 people coming in to go. So there's more than enough parking there. All the other requirements are met in terms of utilities and so forth. The commission thought this was certainly worth our support to help secure some kind of activity and life in there, and again, a profitable return for this particular investment. There are several gentlemen here tonight, if you have any questions. But I think they join me in asking for your support of the Plan Commission's recommendation to you.
City Council? Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
I have one question for the gentleman if you're here. I think it's a great idea. I think it's, there's a need. But I also know from other areas that I've been to, one of the concerns of those is people take what they want out of their units when they're done, and then there's a larger amount of trash. And that would be my only concern, is that that dumpsters or something maintains that we don't get just because there's not enough containers, that we end up with a problem.
You can go ahead and approach the podium, yes. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Mark Robinson, Chief Operating Officer for First Midwest Group. Happy to be back. I used to work at Duplex Products on Sycamore Road 25 years ago. Sold them to Reynolds &amp; Reynolds, and I missed that. I was here every day for years. The answer to that is that every month, some people don't renew their leases. Most of them take their stuff, some of them don't. We'll do quarterly, or approximately quarterly, look at all the stuff that's left, and it either gets thrown away or goes to an auction. So we have had that experience in our other centers, and I want to tell you that in Rockford, introduce yourself.
My name's Bob Tumenero with First Midwest Group.
Bob used to be a prosecutor in Rockford, and he used to drive downtown every day. And I drove downtown every day for years and saw this empty Kmart building. First Midwest Group picked it up, and the first thing they did in the 100-plus thousand square feet was to put boxed-up storage on the side that was closest to the road, and just adding color to the building and doing something with it inspired a Taco Bell out front. We're building it all these as we speak right now in the middle of the parking lot, and there's another 10,000-square-foot building with a Starbucks and other tenants that's full. We're about to build another 10,000-square-foot building out front. Our intention is to do the same thing here, just add some life back to the center. We spent two years of COVID keeping the Mexican grocery store open. I have a very good relationship with, I called Abel Hernandez my partner, a partner by force, but a good partner. We communicate. We're trying to find ways every day to keep him open. In fact, he's going to call me tomorrow. And we also spent a fair amount of time keeping the fitness center open during that timeframe. We, as the manager noted, it's very difficult to fill a space this deep and this thin. We are bringing, we brought you the Myers Center on Peace Road. We're putting a Starbucks out there now, the Jiffy Lube next to it. There's another couple of retail spaces there, and we just built a road behind them to add more on the end. So our intention is to bring good development to the city. We think that this is the best use, the highest and best use of this property at this time. We spent over a million dollars between the parking lot, the roofs, and other maintenance on this building in the last couple of years. So we are dedicated to keep it nice for the municipality. So I guess if there's any other questions, we're here.
Can I ask a question?
No. This is our, this is our meeting. It's a council meeting. Go ahead, sir. So the, I think the root, third question is, we just had a great presentation to a local group called Trash Squirrels, because we've been making a huge effort to be able to pick up the litter throughout our community. So it's top of mind right now just to make sure that the building's well-maintained, which obviously you guys have done, and litter is taken care of, which I have a high level of confidence you guys are going to do.
We have no litter problems at our current centers.
Yeah, yeah. That's great. Any other questions, Council? Yes, Alderman Favor.
I mean, thank you for, obviously, taking care of the property and continuing to invest in DeKalb, even during the, you know, hard times of COVID, and working with the businesses in our community to keep them open. Thank you.
And I hope we've been a good partner, and if not, please reach out to me directly, and I'd love to have a conversation about that.
You've been a very good partner.
Awesome. That's really good to hear. Hearing no other comments or questions. Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, City Clerk.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance two zero two one dash zero four eight passes on first reading. Yep. I would take a motion to pass this ordinance, or, yeah, this ordinance on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yep.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you.
So ordinance two zero two one dash zero four eight passes on second reading. Thank you. All right, now ordinance number three, ordinance two zero two one dash zero four nine, amending Chapter Two, City Council, Section 2.12 Rules of Order and Procedure, and Chapter Three, City Administration, Section 3.14 City Clerk as it pertains to the appointment of a recording secretary to the City Council. Can I have a motion to bring this before the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. And I think I have a public comment form from Ryan? Yep. And again, just a reminder, this is the part of the public comment that is restricted to three minutes.
Yeah, this is in regards to you appointing the executive assistant Ruth Scott. She's one of the people that I was complaining about was part of the wrongdoing in Bill Nicholas's office. I know this is a small group, a clique, if you will, but how is it that you guys are choosing the same people that I'm complaining about to be appointed to, I mean, you're taking powers away from the clerk. Let's, let's be honest here. You have, you know, there's no, there's no checks and balances anymore. This is the council, you say it's your meeting. I believe it's our meeting. And if I had a question, it would have been polite just to allow me to ask the question.
Sure.
Because those self-storage units, by the way, are more geared to long-term, take advantage of low-income people. And I'm not saying that's what their intention is, but that's what happens. And if you guys haven't done your research on that, I mean, I suggest you do. Because this community is going to be using those facilities, and if there's not enough education, they're going to be putting items that depreciate in value.
Can you stay on topic to the ordinance that you're speaking of the public comment for? Thank you.
But you guys would have understood this, and you just voted for it without any consideration to that. So I'm concerned here with the executive assistant Ruth Scott being appointed to this position. I know you're going to do what you're going to do, because it's very clear, after I leave this podium, it's like I wasn't here. And that's a concern for me with the local media as well. And, well, I do believe I'm wasting my breath with you guys, but I'm here as a citizen, as a resident homeowner, and I'm, and I know I say that probably at tedium here, but the situation is, what I'm saying is not untrue. This is a situation that needs to be looked into, and you guys have treated me, this is discrimination. There, you wouldn't be treating anybody else this. If I, if this way, there's no way that this is justified. There's no way that anybody would be treated this way. And I'm bringing it to the public. I'm having to bring it to the public, and you guys haven't responded. You had ample opportunity to respond to me. You haven't. And apparently, you got partnership with local media that this, you are not under any scrutiny. You don't have to respond. You won't even have a discussion. You had more discussion about, than the last meeting, about, you, one of you guys called what was going on with the taxes for the public library is disturbing. And what I'm reporting is not disturbing. What I'm reporting is not, you know, taken seriously. You guys will just continue with your votes like I wasn't even here, and that's, that's scary. That's how I'm being treated by the local media is scary. Now, I want my anonymity, and I'm having, as a victim, be forced to come out here. Ruth Scott does not belong in this position. This, the complaints that I made to the Human Resources about her and Bill Nicholas, the people in the Human Resource don't belong in that position, because this is how I'm being treated. So I hope there's some kind of redress officially. I haven't received that, and I'm demanding it.
That's your time. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a public comment regarding this?
Sure.
Members, I feel that this ordinance change is not necessary at this time as you have already appointed Ms. Scott to serve as the recording secretary. I feel that your issue regarding meeting minutes is with how I have kept them, and you've raised incredibly reasonable issues and complaints. But that your issue with how meeting minutes will be taken by future city clerks is not really known at this point. You know, we could see a recalc, ordinance pass, and I'd be recalled. We could see the holder of the city clerk's office change at the 2025 municipal. I see no reason to make this a permanent change when you've already successfully circumvented the issue that you've had by appointing Ms. Scott to perform as recording secretary. And I believe you're all satisfied with her performance. I see no reason to further change the status quo regarding the enumerated duties of both the city clerk and the executive assistant. So I would politely request that you do not pass this ordinance change.
Thank you. All right, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last regular meeting, as you're well aware, as members of the audience are aware, the council supported a recommendation to appoint executive assistant Ruth Scott, the council's recording secretary. This was intended to assure that minutes of the council proceedings in regular session, executive session, and any special sessions that might be held would be professionally completed and submitted in a timely fashion. In response to your recommendation, this amendment is presented for your approval. The change proposed for Chapter Three does not revise the enumerated city clerk duties that were established in October of 2019. It does change the duties that are enumerated for the executive assistant. In your background, they are redlined to stand out so that there's no doubt about what is being proposed. And it just says that the full-time duties of the executive assistant shall include, and then the redlining, which I may as well read, acting as the recording secretary to the City Council by taking and preparing minutes of the City Council proceedings, faithfully recording the results of resolutions, ordinances, and other actions approved by the City Council on said minutes, overseeing the review, approval, and release of all executive session minutes. I recommend that you approve this ordinance on both readings.
Council. Questions, comments? Alderwoman Morris.
I am sort of, I think originally I was in favor of this, and I am wondering at this point how necessary this is, and if it isn't, I apologize, if it isn't redundant. So I guess I'd like some clarification as to the necessity.
Yeah, well, all that we've had is an acting situation where the council has informally asked the executive assistant to prepare minutes that the competent, that council thought would be confidently and professionally completed. This establishes that duty and that expectation in the city code. This is a professional employee of the City of DeKalb. If the council were to ask any other employee, I would assume they want to enumerate what they want done. It's for everybody, for the public's knowledge, and also for the employees' expectations to be understood.
Oh, yes, or, okay, Alderman Favor.
I would, I would just say, you know, to the comments from our last meeting, well, number one, we have the August meeting minutes finally. They weren't available at our last meeting. Probably if we hadn't brought forth the consideration, we might not even have those tonight. So that's part of the reason. Second is, I would ask anybody to review the two sets of minutes and make a comparison, and ask yourself two years from today, which one of those sets of meeting minutes are going to explain what happened tonight? And that would be my comment. It's very clear. Read the meeting minutes, compare the two notes.
Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
So we can do ordinance on second reading, too. So I would take a motion to pass ordinance two zero two one dash zero four nine on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favors. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Moving on to number four, ordinance two zero two one dash zero five zero, amending Chapter fifty-one, Traffic Schedule C, Parking Prohibited, and Schedule I, Snow Emergency Routes, as it pertains to establishing snow route designation and school zone setbacks on Bar Boulevard. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favors. City Manager.
It is in the spring that the council worked with residents of Bar Boulevard to make some changes for parking, to be better apportioned on Bar Boulevard and to everybody's satisfaction, people using the school athletic fields, longtime residents, and people attending events at the middle school. The one thing that wasn't done was to allow in the city code for enforcement of parking restrictions that elsewhere in the city are in play after a two-inch snowfall. We're reasonably certain, subject to dispute, I suppose, that it will also snow on Bar Boulevard this winter, so I think it's important that we approve this and do so on both readings tonight.
Alderman McAdams?
I just want to say thank you to Zach Gill for his assistance with this. The residents of Bar Boulevard are very happy with the changes, and we appreciate it.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
So ordinance two zero two one dash zero five zero passes on first reading. Can I get a motion to pass the ordinance on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance two zero two one dash zero five zero passes on second reading. All right, moving on to agenda item N, Reports and Communication, Council reports. I'm going to change it up and call Alderman Favors out to start us off.
Thank you. Earlier tonight, Ms. Jasmer had mentioned, you know, when you take your dog for a walk, bring a bag. I would ask, when you take your dog for a walk, bring two. Bring one for your dog, and bring one for the trash. And then the other one, it is that, it is that time of the year, so if you have hoses out on your hose bibs, take them off before they freeze, and burst a line in your home. I can explain that comment if you need me to.
Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman, Alderwoman Larson, skipping around.
Oh, you're...
Yeah, changing it up.
I just want to reiterate again to thank Chief McMaster for all of his great work that he's done, and his devotion, and the giving of his family time to keep DeKalb safe. So we'll miss you, thank you.
Alderwoman Morris?
I just want to share that I was fortunate to be able to get my younger children vaccinated now with the changes, and there are many opportunities. It's not as easy as it was to get my older children vaccinated, but I think it's important for us to work toward that for everyone's safety, so that hopefully at school, they can move to a place where the children don't have to wear masks anymore. That's all.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
For me, you know, it was a busy couple weeks, for sure. Met with the DeKalb Area Renters Association, their full board, and had just a great conversation. Property taxes were definitely a component of that, but it was really good just to get more educated on the real estate market in our community, what it looks like, what we need to do, what changes need to happen in order to make people successful. And we had a lot of conversation, too, about affordable housing. I mean, that's part of the goal, especially when it comes to the Annie Glidden North neighborhood. So they had a lot of good feedback, and it was an educational moment for me, which was great. We also met with the Opportunity DeKalb Board, that's the former Annie Glidden North, I shouldn't say former, the formerly called Annie Glidden North Neighborhood Group renamed to Opportunity DeKalb, and City Manager Nicholas and I had a great conversation with them on just next steps, involvement, impact, what do we need to do, priorities. So that was just good to see so much interest from so many in the community trying to move the needle on Annie Glidden North. As we've mentioned, met with library board members and Executive Director Emily Lee Faulkner. That was a good conversation, and I look forward to continued conversations. Also, the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission meeting, that was awesome. That's a great group of people, completely dedicated to enhancing our community, and I guess the kudos just keeps getting poured on city engineer Zach Gill. But Zach was brilliant in that meeting, just coming up with a lot of great options for them to be able to digest, and the impact that group can help make in our community. So that was just wonderful. Attended a Husky alumni watch party, that was great, you know, it was a championship game, and they just crushed it, so that was a lot of fun, seeing so many of our community come out, but also a lot of alumni from outside the area came, and that's always good to see, getting alumni to be able to reconnect with DeKalb. And it doesn't help, or it does help, having them spend a few dollars out here while they're here, which is always nice. Attended Chief McMaster's retirement party with Alderwoman Larson and Alderman McAdams, that was really cool, just to be in the inner sanctum, and just to see how, I don't know, the brotherhood really comes out and shows their support for one of their own. Just, I thought it was a great ceremony, and as I said there, and I'll continue to say, chief, thanks for all the years of service and the time that you spent in our community. Really, really appreciate it. And lastly, Keg &amp; Colonel should be opening next week, so that's the plan. So new restaurant, Downtown DeKalb, Keg &amp; Colonel. I encourage everyone to go out, support that place, and they'll do brewing operations after the first of the year, I think, so it'll continue to expand and continue to develop. So really excited about that. With that, City Manager, you got any?
No report.
No report, all right. So with that, we're going to move into executive session, that is, to approve, the approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss, I'll take a motion to do this, the purchase of leased or real property as provided for in five ILCS one twenty slash two C five, and then number two, executive session minutes as provided for in five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty-one. Can I take a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favors, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. We are in executive session, thank you. But, oh, I have to have a roll call, you're right, sorry. So I need roll call, City Clerk.
Faver.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Perfect. Thank you, Ruth.
Damn it. You were so close. You were so close.
I was getting there.
I...